Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018. Welcome to those of you that are here with us in the council chambers and those watching online and at home. Please, I'll invite the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Dorman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Moller is excused.
Thank you. I invite our former mayor Cindy Sossman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, Cindy. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Are we going to try to do this electronically? No? Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Public comment. Do we... Yes, I had a feeling we might have someone that's sitting in the front row raising a hand right away, very astute student. Yes, welcome. And we're even going to turn your microphone on, Samantha.
(laughing) Samantha?
Full service here.
Okay, it's on.
Can you raise it up?
Okay, so I have... The reason I'm here is just very briefly to bring to your attention something that you may already know. Kathy and I and Al, who's in the audience here, we're, I believe, amongst the first recipients of permits to build an ADU. And I'm grateful for the... everything that the town staff did to help us get through that. But I was very surprised about the fees that were due us to get our permit. So, of course, I got curious. Sandra was helpful in conversation with Al about this. And the legislation around ADU, which I'm sure you know much better than I do, has specific reference to the fact that local communities need to take a look at fees. That would be associated with traffic or sewer, all the normal things that you would have if you were going to build a house, and adjust it appropriately based on the fact that it was not only a size differential but a use differential. And finally, as well, that it has to do with legislation that is designed to encourage and spur the growth in the building of these particular kinds of projects. So, with that in mind, I'm simply asking for attention from the council and from the town staff toward a review of this. My sense, and this may not be accurate at all, is that it just was something that was missed. My permit came in under a multifamily dwelling, and as far as I can tell, this is quite different than, say, for example, a duplex or something like that. So I'll leave it to you to figure it out. If there's something that I need to do on an official basis, I'll certainly talk with Sandra and Steve to see if I need to do something, but I'm hopeful that we will gain your support to take a look at that. So, fun facts, or facts. Sandra, in conversation with Al, indicated that a new house, approximately 2,000 square feet with multiple bedrooms and multiple two, three bathrooms, carries a fee. And I'm not talking about the fees for review, by the way, of your plans and things like that, just the fees for hooking up and parks and rec and all that other stuff. That would be $28,450. So a 2,000-square-foot house, that adds $14.23 onto the cost of the project per square foot. Kathy and I paid $19,323. We have 408 square feet, which means that we come in at $47.36 a square foot for these fees. That is 330 percent over what the 2,000-square-foot house is. I would rush to point out that the proportionality of it isn't necessarily... shouldn't strictly be followed. My point being that although there's less landscape and water use, and there would not be four or potentially five people in our ADU where there might be in a house, I'm not arguing that there should be strictly a proportional reduction. But if we were paying the same rate that that 2,000-square-foot home would be paying, we would pay $5,690, not 19,324. So I just urge some looking at that. Just to put a little underline on it, Al, who is not as... at least in regards to architecture, isn't as grand as we are. He has, I think, approximately 300 square feet. His cost is approximately $67 per square foot. So you can easily imagine how with everything else that we budget for in a house, like in our case, we... our cost of our house goes up about 18 percent or something like that. So I'm hopeful that for those who follow us, and maybe if we're lucky, it's retroactive, I don't know how that works, but we're hoping that you will take a look at that so that others who follow us will have a little better surprise when they get their permit. So... And I want to thank Sandra for being very helpful to me. And when I called you, it was probably a little excitable. I think I was okay. But I just want to thank you and everybody else who is part of this. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Steve, if you can briefly, since we can't really get into a dialogue, but you can give an explanation.
Yeah, I want to provide a little bit of clarity. First, the... we're referring to impact fees, and impact fees are one small component of the town's municipal fee structure. Impact fees were adopted by this council, by a prior council, some 20-some years ago, and they actually require a specific nexus study, and it relates. So it will take an ordinance of the council to provide direction for us to modify the impact fees. And we will have to come up with... if the council is interested, staff has to have a basis. We have to do some analysis. It's not something that we can easily just come in and tell you, "We're going to do something, waive it, reduce it." Staff actually doesn't have the ability to do that. Sandra and I have actually had conversations on this in anticipation. State law actually takes away, reduces, and does eliminate some impact fees. So I can't... the only thing I'm cautioned is I heard the word "retroactive." That doesn't work. So my concern is, if we're going to do something, the folks that are raising the concern need to patiently wait while we figure out what we might want to do, if that's a council prerogative. The other thing staffs also talked about is... Mr. Bork mentioned the intent of the ADU language. The intent of the ADU language was to bring additional housing stock in. And as we know, we are talking about ATOT measure, raising potential funding to support housing. And it could be that we could actually end up using some of our funding to rebate impact fees for those units that actually rent and do something. So there's some things on a perspective that Sandra and I have had some conversations on, but I see those as two different things. You know, one is, should the fees be reduced? Secondly, would the council potentially want to put some type of a rebate program and the criteria for the program? So if there's interest, I will share with the council that right now, our planning focus is right now on the general plan, so I have a small amount of capacity. So I don't want to promise something can be on an agenda with the appropriate legal analysis, not necessarily this legal analysis, but the math legal in a two-week time period.
Well, let's just commit to making sure there's clarity on what the impact fees are and what they're going toward and why they are what they are. And then we can have the next conversation, which is, can they be adjusted if we feel like that they're counterproductive and not the intent of what we had? If they're explicitly state law, and they are going to fire safety, other public safety, whatever other impacts that are predetermined, let's just make sure that it's very clear, and you're factoring that in also, going forward. If you are interested in building an ADU, you know what you're getting into. And this is not a surprise after you've made that commitment. So I think we can make that commitment to residents that are interested.
And I would say right now... I will speak to Sandra. They are clear. The challenge is, an ADU was not identified back in the '80s when this was put in. So... and unfortunately, we have two flavors of ADUs, if I may explain that to you. One is a standalone ADU or an ADU that's constructed over the top of a garage. And there's a couple different... there's another ADU, which is an extension of the existing home that can be built into the home. So that's why, I mean, if we're going to do something, there may be an approach, but it's going to take council action because right now, when Sandra, we don't have the administrative ability to say... and the two are different, I will point out.
I understand that, but what we can do is make sure that we get the word out of what exactly... So you just described a perfect letter to the editor or a conversation with Sharon. Not... sorry that I'm asking you to add this to your to-do list, but let's make sure that everyone understands. And if it's already written, it should be easy to copy and get that word out on our website and potentially in the Yountville Sun, again, for maximum clarity and understanding. And then it is another conversation in the future if there's something to be adjusted.
I think that's the question, is, is the council interested in having that conversation?
When you educate us a little bit more on the circumstances, we'll then have a conversation about that, I think. Okay, I think we talked more than you did during your public comment, so...
(inaudible).
No. No, you don't. Anyone else on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Thank you for bringing that to the council's attention, and we'll see what information we can either provide again or clarify for you. So thank you. Okay, we'll move ahead from public comment to the consent calendar. We have three items on here for consideration. Is there action on the consent calendar or questions?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously also. Let's move right ahead to our presentation for this evening by former mayor Cindy Sossman to request consideration of a sister city program with Toto Santos in Mexico. Cindy, welcome back to the chambers.
Thanks. I hope you all saw the presentation in your packet.
Could you drop that microphone down a little bit lower? Thank you.
How's that?
Better.
Well, good evening, Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Doran Becker, council and staff. Thank you for having me this evening and allowing me to make this presentation. I know I've been yakking about it for quite a while, so here it is. As many of you know, I've been advocating for this relationship for some time, and I've discussed it with some of you, and I've discussed it with a number of residents and businesses, both in Yountville and Toto Santos. And I've gotten a lot of support for it, and I'm not sure if you've received any emails from supporters or any comments from supporters, but there are a couple here tonight. As you know, the town of Yountville in the beautiful Napa Valley is culturally and economically the mirror image of Toto Santos, Baja California, sir. And if you don't know that or you're not aware of that, I invite you to come down for a visit and check it out, and I'm sure you would agree. And there's a profound quote from yours truly right there for your reading pleasure. What... next slide. What is a sister city relationship? Now, when I was on the council, we had what we called sister cities. But after doing a little research, I realized that they weren't official. And so what I did was a little research into how to make it official. And it's basically, a sister city is a relationship between two communities with similar likes and interests. And I'll get to the details of that in a minute. But a sister city relationship is officially recognized after the highest elected or appointed official from both communities sign off on an agreement to become sister cities. Next slide. The invitation is the first step. And our current mayor, John Dunbar, currently the mayor of Yountville, received an invitation letter from Jesus Beltran Gularte, currently the delegado of Toto Santos BCS dated April 2018. After a meeting with Mayor Gularte and some business members, we discussed the idea and the concept of a relationship, sister city relationship, and they were very excited and they were on board, and hence the letters. And you received the letters. Town manager received a letter. I received a letter from the mayor of Toto Santos. Next slide. So once that interest has been conveyed, how is all of it formalized or made official? And what we need to do is look at the organization that administers the sister city relationships, and that's Sister Cities International, is a nonprofit organization that will provide assistance and programming that will help further the development of the relationship. And I don't know if the clerk provided the example documents in the toolkit. I know it's a lot of technical information, and we won't go into it tonight, but the bottom line is, it's a credible organization with a lot of experience, over 500 with communities and relationships in over 2,000 communities and 140 different countries. And they provide their members with all of these programs, but their mission statement, to me, sums it up, and that's to promote peace through mutual respect and understanding and cooperation, one individual and one community at a time. So that toolkit addresses some examples in how to establish your sister city organization. Next slide. A sister city organization. Now, here's a lot of detailed information, but what does the facilitating group look like on our end? Like the committees that are advisory to the council currently, they consist of some volunteers forming under a nonprofit, for example, like the museum or a cultural center or Chamber of Commerce. And I've already had a conversation with Whitney at the chamber, and I think she sent an email last week about that. And it's not unusual for a municipal government to have representation or formal relationship with the committee. And if... the website is really very interesting and chock full of good information, so if you get a chance to visit sistercities.org, I would recommend it. So what makes this... next slide. What makes this relationship pertinent to Yountville? Well, I've been in Toto Santos for going on three years now, and both communities rely heavily on tourism to sustain their economies. Both are deeply rooted in the art and culture, culinary arts and wine, dance and music, fine arts and film, and everything else you can think of. We share a common interest in nurturing the young minds of our future leaders. Sister Cities specializes in programs for youth. Both communities share a passion for their physical location and nature's beauty. Now, I don't know if you've been to the Baja, but it's... this time of year, it's absolutely spectacular. It's a gorgeous place and a gorgeous destination, and they have an up-and-coming, highly competitive grape-growing region, Valle de Guadalupe, and they're producing some very, very nice wines. And both strive to emphasize the visitor experience through special events and showcase their... that showcase their communities. This was what I was surprised with because there are so many similarities. Food and wine events, and this slide shows an example of those things. The Tropic of Cancer Concert Series. We have Yountville Live, open studios. They have an open studios. And they're all taking place about the same time of the year. Toto Santos Film Festival and the Napa Valley Film Festival. I attended the film festival last year, and I was at Baja Taste, having a multi-course meal prepared by the chef that that film was documenting. And it's... it would be a good cross-cultural experience to see that film, have him here, and on the same flip side, us go to Toto Santos and see some of their film. They could see some of our films. Historical walking tour and home tour. I participated in that in Toto Santos this year, and it was amazing. We have a historical walking tour. The Baja 1,000, we don't have here. We don't have off-road racing, but, you know, we have the Napa Valley Marathon. Yountville Arts, sip and stroll. They have very, very similar interests in common with Yountville. And the Yountville Days Parade and Festival coming up this Sunday. You'll all be there, I hope. Of course, you're in the parade. I'll be chauffeuring the grand marshal this year. So... oh, and the images, the wine tasting at the Gastrovino, the Food and Wine Festival, Dia de los Muertos, and Lobster Chili Rellenos. So there's not much else to say, other than I can't think of any other two communities that share more common interests in common than Yountville and Toto Santos. My love of and loyalty to each of these little towns is what compelled me to advocate for this relationship. Whether or not this council and the community decides that this is a worthwhile endeavor, I assure you, my enthusiastic promotion and support of both will continue. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and don't make them too technical, because I'm working the Safeway open, and I haven't had time to read all the toolkit and the rules. So...
Fair enough. Any questions about the presentation from the council? Councilmember Doran.
Well, of course, mine is technical. Could you explain a little more about the formation of the 501(c)(3) or the citizen group? I mean, does it have to be a formal organization, or how could that work?
That's a good question, and there's a lot of opportunity in the rules if you look at it on the website. Affiliation with any 501(c)(3)(6) or any nonprofit, just to facilitate the programming, because it's all nonprofit-oriented, and there's nothing in terms of a financial burden on either side. Everything is done gratuitously. The organizations and their activities, you know, if, say, we wanted some kids to go to Toto Santos to experience Simana Santa, that's spring break or Easter, and they wanted some people to come out. It would be an exchange, and they would cover their own expenses. So there's really no expense to the town, and we're not forced to create a 501. The town already has a 501 that they use for other nonprofit activities, so we could just have another committee. And you know how you'd like to build committees and listen to them all day long. So, did I answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, question?
In reading through the types of affiliations, I noted that the sister city relationship depends on whether or not we are members of the sister city nonprofit. Are we?
Right. Sister Cities International is the nonprofit organization that facilitates the programming and provides guidance for your committees. I don't believe we are a member.
That is correct. The town is not, and it's not an expensive proposition, if that is something the town wanted to consider. Since I am...
Sorry, did you say it's not inexpensive or it's not unexpensive?
Not expensive.
Okay.
As the convener of committees, maybe it's a little opportunity to provide a little framework for the council. Having been in several different cities, which have had formal sister city relationships, and I do think what former mayor Sossman alludes to, there have been some connections to prior cities, but they were never... I mean, we traded a few things, hung something on the wall, and 40 years later, people don't really know. An effective sister city relationship, if it's going to be something more than just that, needs to have a level of partnerships. And those include elements like the governmental entity, where they're sharing information, usually a business component. So the business community, a residential component. Some programs include an educational component. For example, when I was in San Bruno, San Bruno had a sister city relationship with Narita, which was the airport city right outside of Tokyo. We had an every-other-year program, which had a small governmental delegation that exchanged information. Ours was focused around middle school. So there was a middle school exchange and a business community exchange that all went. And there was a citizen committee that helped to organize, spend time on the tours, the events and activities when the folks came, so that the exchange was meaningful and purposeful. So I think, if I was to frame it, I think the question that I would look at is a bit of a process question first and not a question about Toto Santos, to be honest. I mean, that would be... the question would be, is the council interested in potentially having formal sister city relationships? If so, what might the criteria and parameters for that relationship be? And then you have some opportunity to evaluate or request. And I would also suggest we need to see some there, there. You know, there needs to be some community-based support that fits those criteria that the council may have established for the relationship. So those are just some guidance that I would offer you for framing the discussion. I think many communities have found that there can be positive relationships, and a community, depending on their interest levels and the support from any community, it's not uncommon that some might have several sister cities. But again, there really does need to be a level of community-based grassroots support for it, for it to be purposeful long-term.
Sure.
I have... I know that Napa has a sister city, Iwanuma in Japan, and when they had the terrible earthquake and tsunami, I led the fundraising effort to raise funds for them. I believe that we have to have a standing committee, sister city committee, in order to, you know, make it work between the two cities. And as a matter of fact, the sister city committee from Iwanuma is coming back to Napa to thank us once again for the help that we sent them. So it's, you know, I can see the value in it and the cultural exchange. So anyway, I just... I do see that there's an option, which is that you could designate it as a friendship city in the interim, while we decide if we want it to be a member of the sister city nonprofit.
Sure.
But anyway, it's just food for thought. I don't think we're making a decision this evening.
No, and I appreciate that, but, you know, there are a lot of criteria that impact us, and especially a sister city in Mexico, south of the border, anywhere. And I think there's plenty of support for it, and I've talked to a number of people who are very excited and very interested. And I know some of you have been there. If you haven't been there, I invite you to come down for a visit.
So I would suggest that, first, I'd like to hear if anyone else from the audience would like to comment, but also it would be helpful, as Steve was just saying, if you could put together a little bit more structure with the community support you're referring to, if there is... and Steve did a very nice job of highlighting some of the elements that would be expected for us to really evaluate. We can offer, if you're looking for head nods from us, that yes, we're open to you pursuing this. Maybe that's the kind of guidance we can give tonight. We're not taking any formal action on this.
Sure.
But if we felt like there was no interest in sister city relationships, we'd want to tell you that as well.
Mayor, what I'm sensing is, I would appreciate if there was some consensus direction for me to do a little more evaluation and maybe put up a framework of possible what a structure would look like for you, and then work with Ms. Sossman on... I'm trying to keep the two separate. First, having a policy so that you would evaluate it, and then, secondly, recognizing, obviously... obviously, she's advocating for a relationship with a specific community, but I think we can work on the two, if that's something that there's interest.
Is there council interest in that type of pursuit? Councilmember Doran?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an interest in that, but I am also sensitive to all the plates that we're spinning right now. So I would say, perhaps after the first of the year, or maybe sometime then, but, I mean, I have an interest in looking at it.
Thank you. Any other council members have any other comments? I think the...
Yeah, and the reason, one of the reasons I brought it before you...
Yes.
One of the reasons I brought it before you now, and this evening in particular, is Mayor Armino Delegado Galarte, his term is up in November. So I would really like to see something happen. And the first step is the exchange of letters, which you've already done, and probably more practically and purposefully would be to join Sister Cities International as a starting point, because they provide all the framework. And for the town of Yountville, I believe the fee for joining was $185.
It's not, that's not going, yeah, it's not a...
It's a nominal fee.
Nominal.
So I'll ask you to work with Steve to put a little bit more content together...
Substance.
...for us to evaluate. We have, as he said, I've worked with Steve on a letter to thank the Delegato and the interest of their community, so we've taken that initial step, but I think we do need to have more substance for us to evaluate. Let's find out if this is something that our community can rally behind. I think, as you pointed out, it's an interesting proposition to create a more formal relationship with a city down in Mexico. And you certainly have made it a very personal location for you, so you're our principal contact there, so, but there are others, I know, from our Napa Valley community that also have properties and interest down there, so...
And I would also say, under the structure of the Town of Yountville Community Foundation, this actually could work under the umbrella with the committee doing its work and the finance structure under that. So, I mean, I think the broader interest for me, and I'll bring you up some program ideas, and then you all can just determine if, because the other question is, how are you going to evaluate if somebody else comes forward and says, my, you know, this place I want to look at? So that's why I'm kind of giving you a process first while we're going through the...
And there have been those inquiries in the past. Not only the, as you mentioned, the rather old and rather unstructured relationships in France, Croatia, and Mexico, but also there is some local interest in renewing at least one of those, so...
And what I would say, I think if we're going to have sister-cities, I'm going to be very candid, joining sister-cities organization is a very practical, logical, because it helps to cement and understand, and it provides both cities a framework. And again, I use the San Bruno example, you know, that was well thought out on both parties, and then they had an understanding as to the occasional, it's only one way. There's, you know, each relationship can be crafted differently and modify, but it does need, you know, the real question is why, and how do we want to benefit? And I think we can put some of those together.
And knowing that we have a meeting on October 16th, if there's something you can work out with Steve between now and then, that Steve can feel comfortable bringing forward, then we might be able to move...
Excellent, yeah. I'll be on a plane to Totosantos October 15th.
Ironically.
Deadline.
Again, thank you, Cindy, very much for your presentation.
Sure, thank you.
And the interest. Any, again, any members present like to comment? No? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move ahead. We have no public hearings, no administrative or regular items, so we're going to go straight to staff informational reports. We have two listed and one more I've asked for, but let's start off with the preview of Envision Yountville Open House scheduled for October 13th. Sandra?
Good evening. We are sharing with you the next update in the Envision Yountville General Plan Update process, and we are pleased to announce that this week we released the first public draft of the general plan document. And you can find that on the Envision Yountville webpage, on the homepage, and also on the project documents page. And it's a long document, as you can see.
Thank you very much.
So our goal was to provide it as soon as it was ready for distribution, and with enough time so that the public can review it to really know and understand its contents for that open house that's noted for Saturday, October 13th. And that open house will start at 1:00, and I'd like to clarify for everyone who thought it started at a different time, it starts at 1:00, and it will go until 4:00. And we're getting the word out of that event. We're doing next-door and social media postings. It's on the Envision Yountville webpage as the next event. We have it on the Town of Yountville calendar. We're running two different ads in the paper, the Yountville Sun this week and next week. We're meeting with Sharon Stensis of the Yountville Sun on Thursday, and we're hoping to get an article in the paper. So all these are occasions to really clarify the date and the starting time, and really get word out so that the public will attend. The open house is structured in two parts. It will open with a formal overview presentation, and then move to more casual stations around the room. And the formal presentation will be given by staff and the consultant team, and we want to share with the public information and details on the process that started in February of last year up until this point, and that included the speaker series, each of the tag meetings where they reviewed the existing goals, policies, and programs of the general plan, and made the recommendations that are in the draft plan, as well as different ZDRB and town council meetings, and the community workshops as well. So we'll share information on that to help the public understand how we arrived at the document that is considered the first public draft. We're also going to go chapter by chapter to describe really the overall theme of the chapter, and then the significant changes, so that the public knows what's changing. And after that, we will then move to the informal stations that are in the room, and we anticipate six or seven stations with subject matter that really follows the different elements or chapters in the general plan. Those are noted in the staff report, but the more common ones amongst all communities are housing and land use, mobility, open space and conservation. We'll have a station for safety hazards and noise, and we'll have a station that addresses unique qualities of Yountville in a new chapter that we're providing, or a new section with three different chapters, and it is for the community, the quality of life, and the history of Yountville. So at those tables, we'll have copies of the draft general plan, of the workbook, and we'll have questions that we're seeking community input from, as well as boards that are prepared with each of the significant changes to the plan. And residents will have a chance to indicate a level of support with a dot. If they want to share more information, they can use sticky notes. We'll be accepting comment cards on topics that they don't see a chance or have an opportunity to comment on. And it's a great opportunity for the public to chime in for the first time on what we've created based on the feedback that we've heard. And it's been my mantra all along, and I'll repeat it, but we, this is the first draft, and it is just that. We know that once it's presented, we'll get feedback that will lead to changes, and we'll see a revised draft, and then a final draft, and one that's ultimately adopted by the council, we hope. But this is an opportunity to let us know the issues that we heard, the solutions that we've come up with, the way we framed it, did we get it right? What do we need to change? What do we need to amplify? And so we're excited to hear from the public. Once again, that open house starts at 1:00 on Saturday, and we hope we have a great outpouring of the public so we can get comments.
At the community hall or community center?
It's at community hall.
Okay. And you're still inviting people to provide feedback if they have not already, if there's something they don't see that was part of the conversations of previous meetings, they're still welcome to offer that information.
Yes.
And you may explain, either in that setting or future settings, why something may not be present, based on tag recommendations, staff recommendations, other dialogue that's already happened. In case somebody says, wait a minute, my idea's not there, it's because of this process.
Yes.
Okay. Questions from staff or from council of staff? Councilmember Doran?
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. I know you have lived and breathed this for more than you ever thought you would, so thank you. And although I just picked up my tome today, I will enjoy reading it the next few days. So just a few questions. Your rollout advertising and social media plan sounds really good through our December 4th meeting, I'm thinking. Do you intend to sort of keep that level of effort to tell people it's going to be at the arts meeting, it's going to be at the parks meeting, it's going to be at ZDRB? As it goes through those iterations? Because those are some more opportunities for public comment.
Yes. We want to keep it out there for the public, so at a minimum, we'll be posting agendas for those meetings.
Perfect.
But if we find that we're getting good feedback on this level of effort, it's something that we can continue.
No, that's perfect, as long as we really get the agendas out on our social media. And then on the stations versus the presentation, do you have, it's probably too early, do you have any idea how long one piece will be versus the other? Like, I'm assuming there will be plenty of time to circulate to the stations?
Yes, so we're thinking perhaps as long as an hour for our formal presentation, it may not be that long, and then two hours for drop-in, and it truly is intended drop-in. Someone can come by, go to one station, go to all the stations, and at any time over that two-hour period, you can come in.
Staff's had a lot of conversation on the format for this, and one of the things we realized from several other workshops, the Climate Action Plan, we recognize a lot of people won't come in, but we also know it's important to tell them where we started, how we got to where we got, kind of to the mayor's point, well, where's this? You know, if they would let us go through the history of what all got talked at at Tag, where Tag is coming from, you know, we got to tell them, there were some big ideas up here that got narrowed down, and you're not going to see them going forward. But they won't know that if we don't share that. So that's why for us, especially for our community, bringing that session together, we encourage people to walk through. I think it's going to be an informative, you know, an hour sounds like a long time, but I think it's going to move quickly because of, there'll be pictures and background and, you know, charts that talk about, we asked questions, we did polls, this is what the feedback, how did we get, you know, same thing you have. This is, this is a, if you, could you show that? I mean, one, we're all excited because...
It's a different camera, Steve.
I'm sorry, yeah, that one.
They understand.
All right, so the, we'll have the model there. But it's a very detailed, the graphs, the pictures, the reference points, the charts that go in, it's so much more than just the policy context, because some of that information really helps to guide. And then it's just a policy document. So really, when they look at it, I think, you know, Eddie and I are working, and I have shared with the ad hoc emergency preparedness. The safety element covers a whole lot of some of the conversation topic that's relevant coming up. So, I mean, there's a lot of, staff's really excited, and I'm very pleased with the product that we're putting out there. But that's, then it's going to come into the policy questions, and those are what the council and the community will be discussing and wrestling with over the next several months as you start that. And then you will be seeing this as, from a discussion standpoint at the council level at your December 4th meeting. So it's, we are excited, but I think it's important, and this is the scary thing for me and staff, we're going to have a whole lot of people that go, where did this come from? And in spite of all of our best efforts and our education over a year-plus, we're going to have to re-educate some of the community as to where we started, where we're at, and where the finish line is, and what the purpose of the document is. So we're aware of that, and that's just, that's what's going to happen in the next six months.
And so, to partially to that point, do you intend a question-and-answer period during the presentation portion of the day? So that, I mean, so people can hear, like if someone asks what happened, then five people can hear it.
So, I'll invite Sandra to answer this, but what I would suggest is, we need to be careful that we don't turn this into a three-hour question-and-answer period.
Yeah.
Because we've seen a couple of those meetings get totally misdirected from the content that was going to be presented, because people have decided that now they're going to get engaged, you know, six meetings in. And so I just caution that we allow the staff to create the structure that's going to be the most advantageous to getting all the information out, and if it naturally evolves into Q and A there, that's one thing. And I'm looking to you, Sandra, to say, is this how you envision this? We certainly want to hear from the public, that's the whole point of it.
Right.
But we want to make sure that we get the information to the public as well.
Right. To answer the question.
Hold on just a second.
I think there's definitely value in having a short Q and A after the presentation. There may be people that have the same question, we're getting those ideas out there. But the real value in this event is going to the stations and having a chance to give your individual feedback, and, so I wouldn't want it...
And we are encouraging...
Fall into a several-hour question-and-answer period.
We are encouraging comment cards and questions at the stations, because that's where it's more particular to the question and logging those. So that's the part, because we're also concerned that some people may misrepresent a Q and A question opportunity as a statement-making opportunity. And we're not, that's not what the purpose of this is. They can provide that on the comment card at the works, you know, at the appropriate station that's relevant to the section. So we, Sandra and I agree, very small question segment, we will encourage people to take those, keep their questions, but take them to the station that is relevant, where they can spend more time, there may be more material to help them grasp that. So that's kind of our approach towards that.
And then e-comment, sorry, e-commerce after the open house, is that the best way to then add additional comments or questions?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an opportunity on Envision Yountville to submit comments, but you can always email any of the staff members, even write a written comment and drop it off here at Town Hall. We'll accept all level of comment.
Okay. Councilmember Doran?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
I just want to confirm that the council may attend that, but we're not going to be able to vote with our dots.
That's a great, Vice Mayor. One, I have to express my appreciation to the council, because I know it was a challenging experience for you to stay attached but away while the Tag was working. And you're right, it is now in your purview. So everything will be agendized for your participation, your involvement, but I do want to stress to your point, you are not making any actions. You will be attending, you'll be hearing, you know, your first course where you're going to provide formal feedback and direction is going to be at the December 4th. And then, you know, we'll schedule another meeting after a few other things where you will provide further comment and direction, and hopefully take formal action on adoption in March. But I do think...
Although, I would hesitate to use the opportunity to use dots and comment cards where people can see you and see the comments you're making. It might influence how they feel about it. But again, as the mayor indicates, you can send written comment to us, so make sure we get that, so that it can be included before December 4th.
No, I was assuming that we were not going to be, you know, adding our perceptions.
Well, and I think that's something the council can consider. I hesitate to have us engage for that very reason, because I don't want to influence folks. We've stayed out of the conversation to a great degree for a year, so that we did not artificially influence the individual resident opinion. So I think if it's going to come to us, it will come to us for discussion, deliberation, decision, but I think that we should continue the generic effort of letting the public voice their opinions without our biases added in. We shouldn't be making decisions on the elements prematurely anyway. I would hate to influence somebody who either sees one of us say, oh gee, I better vote for that because Councilmember X just put a dot on that, and I want to be on that side. I think, and if the council agrees with that, that we certainly can engage in the conversation, but still in a limited role, where we let the residents do kind of all the work. Now, I'm open to consideration by council, so other thoughts about that? Councilmember Durham?
We'll have our time on the 4th to have those discussions and to follow it up. And we'll talk about it. We'll definitely talk about it.
And I suspect it'll be more than just December 4th.
Yeah, exactly, to start the conversation on December 4th.
Councilmember Doran, your thought? Councilor Dorman, your thought?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to be able to attend the meeting.
Certainly, yes.
But I do agree that if someone sees someone sticking a dot, it could make them stick three more somewhere there or somewhere else. So, yeah, I'm okay with that.
And Vice Mayor, you okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Attendance and even verbal participation, I think, is, is appropriate, and we just want to keep it somewhat limited to that scope. Okay? Were there any other questions of Sandra's presentation? And I see a-
I would like to also thank you, Sandra, and, and everyone who's been handling this, because it's been, you know, you've done an outstanding job. And it's been a lot of work, so I'm sure you'll be happy when February is over.
We'll see if we can stick to that timeline, too. Any other questions or thoughts from the council? Thank you very much for the update. We're going to move on next to our electronic document management system update. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. The town council has authorized staff to proceed with an updated electronic document management system, and staff has been working on that for quite some time. It's a very involved process. Council has been provided a detailed narrative or outline of the things we have accomplished to date and where we're at now. I'm going to go, I'm going to not speak to each one of those bulleted items, but we'll go to where we are at now, which is what I'm really excited about. And we, within the last two weeks, have had Laserfish installed on Public Works, specific Public Works computers and Town Clerk computers to test out the department file plans that have been created. Staff has done a lot of work from all departments in participating in meetings, developing the department file plans. Once they're created, they're submitted to Laserfish, and they brought them within the system. And now we're at the place where we are testing those department file plans. At first glance, it seems to be a very user-friendly software, and I'm really excited about the future of the system. In addition, there's a few other components going on with this upgrade, which is a Laserfish Legistar integration, which I've got to use on the last two council meetings, which allows you to import and export information from both systems. So, with the last two council meetings, I've been able to go into my Legistar Agenda Workflow System and just do three clicks, and it's completely exported out to Laserfish into the, what's called an incoming folder, and then we just index it using a few key metadata fields that were developed during our department file plan creation. In contrast, to show you the differences, Ann in our office, she would have to go in and take each individual set of PDFs, create one file, and then save those to our OneDoc Stop. So, it's immediately, we'll have a staff resource savings time, because it just is exported out. So, I'm really excited about that. We're, they're also working on migration of all the documents that were in OneDoc Stop to Laserfish, and that includes our minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and council packets, what we have to date from incorporation to present. So, that'll be an exciting resource to use. Our next steps is, like I mentioned, Public Works and Town Clerk will be testing the department file plan and making changes. There will also be future training of all staff members, which will include training on indexing, scanning, and OCR training, and then also training for form administrators. We also have an allocation in the share's budget for scanning of paper records, which includes roughly fifty box, fifty to sixty boxes for Public Works, Town Clerk records, and then rolled plans in the gray plans rack in the Planning Department. And with that said, we will see where that gets us in the project, but we may, will likely need additional funds to continue on with the remaining departments, which would be all the documents related to Planning Department, any building records that we have from when the county was our building inspector. We have those in the cargo container. So, there's a variety of things that will need to be scanned and indexed. And before they, that can happen is, staff will have to go through those records and identify what the final permanent record is going to be. So, any future funds may come from the unassigned fund balance or initial budgeting in the next fiscal year. Our current contract also includes workflow development. And just one example would be electronic signature of our contracts. So, and having something like DocuSign be a part of this. To, and I would consider doing this for our resolutions, ordinances, minutes, and a variety of documents, which would streamline our business practices. And then finally, we are in the process of coordinating or interviewing a records coordinator position right now, and that person will come on board and provide support to the department. So, each department should have a, a records person assigned to their department, and then the records coordinator would work with them. So, hopefully in tandem, they can work on scanning records in-house and offset some of the costs or needs for additional budgets. So, we'll have to define those parameters when that person gets on board. And communicating with Laserfish reps, they say one to two boxes a week for scanning, so we'll have to develop that. So, it will be new to all of us, so we'll be developing that work program once they're on board. In addition, as part of our contract with ECS for Laserfish, they provide an annual training once a year. So, we have several staff members that will be attending to that, attending that, and there is no charge. It's just your time away and the commute time, and it's going to be a really good training. I've, I've seen it demonstrated, and it's an opportunity for all of us to meet and network with other users of Laserfish and get tips. And then their Laserfish Direct provides an annual conference. And so, we'll be sending a couple of people to that. And then Eddie went to some training that I was unable to attend and won a membership to one of the trainings, so we'll be able to send someone else at no cost.
Good man.
Good job, Eddie. In addition, I received a question from council about when council and the public will be able to have access to Laserfish for the, for documents. And that will be sometime at the end of the first quarter in 2019. We still have a lot of testing to do to get to that point. And there was also questions about the need for additional staff funding, and I think I addressed that in, in my information earlier. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Questions of the report. I'm not sure I heard the funding piece. I see in the staff report that says there's no fiscal impact, but you're talking about adding a coordinator position and some other incidental, I'm assuming, cost as we go.
The council approved the records coordinator position in our current budget cycle, so we're, have just proceeded with funding or with recruiting for that. So, it's already in the current year's budget. And then the funding allocation is, after we evaluated our request for proposals that were submitted, we went with Laserfish, which wasn't as costly as the other vendor. And so, we had some cost savings there, which we were able to use towards or allocate towards the scanning of hard copy records. So, we have, when the budget was developed, we went ahead and issued purchase orders for those services, and th- those funds have been encumbered to go towards those projects.
So, when it says no, it's no additional beyond budgeted?
Additional, right, yes.
Got it. Okay.
I think, yeah. And I think one of the things that, as we look at timing-wise, you know, the part-time position, there's going to be a, a support level. We also need to realize how much the organization can process at one point in time. And, and that's probably more important from a metering standpoint. And that's why when I was, you know, we're talking about it, we may have additional need next year to do the scanning. You know, we'll see how far we get with the allocation, but it'll be a much smaller scale, scope than what we have. But again, for us to really have the historical archives, for example, I'll pick a simple item. You know, a lot of people like coming up and finding the historical background on building permits that may have been pulled. But they all have to be entered into the system, because we don't currently have an electronic. So, those are the types of things, when we talk about where we're going and plans, those are the things that currently are not scanned. We've made a priority to do the historical documents and the council agenda packet. So, those have been priorities, a certain high-level contracts. But as you can imagine, there's a second tier of documents that'll be in this part. We are excited, but I think, you know, we're also launching, we will be going live shortly with our Acela Asset Management and Application Process for Land Use. So, that's, and Building Check. So, we're going to be sitting in an area there where we're starting to modernize. And then one of my last areas of prioritization for electronic will be electronic plan check submittals. So, that if you've ever been in the back conference room lately, you'll notice how much plan check submittals and all of those take up and all those. And that's just one of our last areas to go. And we will be pretty much a, a very advanced state of technology. But that state of technology and use of technology also helps us to stay as a leaner staff, although the initial implementation can be challenging while we're trying to learn the new technology, get used to using it, and do everything else we generally do. But the long-term, I, I think we've demonstrated as an organization, pretty good results for that. So, big time for the organization. This is a big one. And I do think, Michelle pointed out, this is also going to create a much better portal and access for the council, staff, and the general public to be able to pull up, search our background without involving any of us.
Okay. Sounds good. Yes, Vice Mayor?
So, am I to understand the records coordinator position is a part-time position?
Yes.
I think. Thank you.
Okay.
That's what the council approved. That's what's in the budget. That's what we do.
Got it. Thank you, Michelle. I did ask our Park and Recs Director to add a report for Yountville Days. So, if, I was going to say, in between coughs, Samantha?
I apologize for that. So, Yountville Days Parade and Festival is this Sunday, October 7th. The parade starts at 10:00 a.m. at the south end of Washington Street and travels north to Yountville Community Park. Our parade theme this year is honoring our first responders. As you know, it's, it was about a year ago, the weekend after Yountville Days, when the fires broke out here in the area. You know, we've had some other things come up between now and then, and it just seems very timely to honor those people. Very excited. We have seven different agencies being represented in our parade as those honorary parade marshals. And so, it's a really great showing. It's a terrific opportunity for our community to come out and line the parade route with their signs of thanks and their smiles and their waves, and really, you know, to be able to show them the thankfulness I know we all have for our first responders. Of course, on top of that, we have about twenty other entries in our parade, so it'll be a terrific parade. At the park, it's a free festival. We have children's activities, live music, food booths, beer, wine, and that'll go till two o'clock.
And beautiful weather.
And it's supposed to be a beautiful eighty degrees. Yes.
Yay!
Very good. Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Cough-free.
I know.
Well done.
Okay. Do we have any other staff informational reports that are not listed? Seeing none? Council meeting reports, et cetera? No pertinent information to share from Napa County Flood Control, Napa Valley Transportation Authority. We did have a board retreat. Councilor Dorman, do you want to report out on that?
Sure. Um, we had a regular business meeting and a board retreat. We talked about possible financing of a new transportation center. We took pretty, really robust public comment on Route 29, our express route, regarding scheduling and timeliness, and the staff committed to look into ways to improve it. Sort of on the more retreat end of it, we took a look at congestion management tools. That's where we focused, redesigning some of the routes, changing service in some defined areas to be more of an on-call rather than a fixed route within those specific areas. Some new rideshare platforms, autonomous vehicles. They are working toward a demo in downtown Napa. If the funding comes in, the demo of a shuttle. And we also talked a lot about outreach to community, ways together meaningful information from both riders and non-riders, and how to best use that information to, to relieve congestion through the valley. And we did have a first presentation from our new Public Communications Marketing Director, Christina Lee. And I have already seen her out and about, networking and making good on her commitment to engage the community.
Very good. Also, just add, since that retreat, our staff is working with NVTA staff on the status of our Yountville trolley and potentially new electronic vehicle that will replace the trolley. Those conversations, I believe, Councilor Dorman and I will be a part of going forward. So, in the next couple of meetings, we may have an update on that as well. Upper Valley Waste, I believe, town manager has a brief report from Councilmember Mueller.
I do, from Councilmember Mueller, but it's LAFCO-related, not Upper Valley Waste.
Oh, LAFCO, that's right.
One, the final draft for the South County Region Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence is circulating, and that is expected to take action on December 1st. And that involves the Sphere of Influence Municipal Service Review for the City American Canyon, American Canyon Fire District and County Service Area 3, which is the area all around the airport. One of the more significant actions, LAFCO took action on Monday to approve RFP and consultant selection for the countywide water and wastewater MSR, which will evaluate services for fourteen public agencies providing water, recycled water, wastewater service in Napa County. Policy Consulting Associates and Berks and Associates were selected to prepare this. This MSR is intended to serve as a tool to help Napa LAFCO, the affected agencies, and the public better understand the existing public service structure. Question if we're providing the service in the right, the most effective way, and if there should be possible changes that as a regional community, we should evaluate. So, big, big item, because it's a very weighty item for LAFCO, and especially given some of the contentious natures related water, groundwater, extension of services. What I do want to say that has been very unique about this process is that LAFCO has asked for and received support from a focus group, that is a diverse focus group, including representatives from the cities, the special districts, the county, city of Napa, and special districts, including Napa Sanitation. So, a, a very unique collaborative approach has been used to develop the RFP and then to screen the RFP. And the focus groups included Phil Brennan with the City of Napa Public Works, Steve Hartwig with the City of American Canyon Public Works, Tim Healy with Napa Sanitation District, their general manager, David Morrison with the County of Napa Director of Planning and Environmental Services, and myself representing Yountville and the Upper Valley Small Communities. So, I, that's a significant step, and it's a very different approach for LAFCO. And it's something that they're making some strides on. And the community, or the, the board unanimously approved the entering into the contract in the, which is a neighborhood of a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars for a two-year project. So, all of us participating agencies will have to participate to provide the data and the information. But I, I think it's a significant step for the region, especially given some of the issues that were challenged with its time.
Thank you. Councilor Durham, you had a report?
Announcement.
Announcement.
It's October 2nd, so we need to start thinking about Thanksgiving. So, for many of you saw the Yountville Sun last week, as a citizen of Yountville, I'm happy to help proceed with the Yountville Community Thanksgiving. So, we've got a lot of good support already. We've got some amazing groups coming on already to donate food and time. Have spent some time with people who are willing to donate both the community centers, thank you, to the town, to have that discussion, and looking forward to it. All of my contact information as a town citizen is on the front page of Yountville's, Yountville Sun, which a lot of people apparently read. So, please do not hesitate to use that email or that telephone number I put on the front page of the Yountville Sun to call me with any, with any questions or to volunteer. One important point is, we're trying to do an online reservation system, so there is no confusion. And I'm hoping to have that up within ten days. Don't put that in the minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Approximately ten days. Thank you. I know the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Dorman and I were- and I were on a call today. I invite either, being members of our Emergency Response Subcommittee, if you have reports out on the call as it relates to the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System that's going to be testing. Did, either you want to report out, or I can?
I want to. Could you mind? Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you? Okay. I will do so. So just so folks are aware, there have been emails and texts going out to the general public. There is going to be an emergency alert test on October 9th at approximately 9:30 a.m., and it is part of the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System called IPaaS, that is a federally operated system through the, through FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management System. It's different than NICSIL. Many folks are familiar with NICSIL. NICSIL is a Napa County-operated system that's an opt-in system. This IPaaS system is another platform from which we can expect public alerts and warnings. And it is run, it's basically automatically inclusive of everyone that has a mobile wireless device. This is not to be the single only platform where we will be receiving emergency messages. It's, it's a new additional one. There, there's going to be a test tomorrow that's a national, what they're calling the Presidential Test, a national test tomorrow, October 3rd. They did not list a time for that, so people may receive a text message. It will say that it is a test of this system, but we are definitely going to have one throughout Napa County and other North Bay regional areas on Monday, the 9th, at 9:30 a.m. Again, you'll receive a, just a test that says what it is, and will also ask people to participate in a survey that helps identify the parameters that the, that will help Napa County operate the platform in the future. It's only a wireless system test, so for folks that want to receive either hardline or internet, those are other platforms that will be tested in the future. So we wanted to alert folks, no pun intended, that this system is going to be tested. They intentionally chose this to be approximately on the anniversary of the start of the fires, because they know that there's a significant awareness right now, not that we've forgotten it all, but they did that in conjunction with the anniversary of the fires. So look for your phones to receive those messages next Monday around 9:30. It is a test. We want to make sure that people understand that, and there will be feedback and other information provided between now and Monday and as we follow up. So I thank the other members of this council that were participating in that. That may also come back up as we continue the outreach within Yountville on other emergency preparedness for our community specifically. Are there any other reports or announcements? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. You did just set my memory, Mayor. The Board of Supervisors, at their meeting on October 9th, they will be receiving reports on, on the fires, and so it might be worth attending or tuning in for that or watching it, because I know they're going to have some nonprofits reporting and some of the first responders reporting.
And I think I may have said, thank you, that October 9th was Monday, it's Tuesday. So Tuesday, October 9th, there is another call that we have on Monday, the 9th, to prepare us for Tuesday's test. So the test will be Tuesday, 9:30 a.m.
There's one more. And that is that the Napa, the Napa Court, the Napa, oh, okay, I don't remember that. No, the Grand Jury Report on the fire, wildfires. They will be making a presentation at the Napa Library on Tuesday, October the 9th, in the evening from 7:00 to 8:15 p.m.
Thank you.
And while we're throwing dates out, we might as, remind everybody that the Yountville will be hosting an emergency preparedness workshop here at the Yountville Community Center on Tuesday, October 30th, beginning at 5:30. And that'll be an informational, sharing type of a thing, and resource information providing.
And for golf fans out there, tomorrow starts the Safeway Open at Silverado with Pro-Am, and then Thursday through Sunday, the professionals take over the course. And it was a pretty entertaining golf tournament last year. I'm sure there are some high-profile names coming back this year, so I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun again this year. Very reasonably priced for tickets. So Thursday through Sunday is the actual tournament, Pro-Am tomorrow. So I believe that takes care of our business. We don't have any closed session tonight. Gary, thanks for being here. Did we hear, please, one word, at least one word, before you drive three hours?
It's been a great meeting.
Thank you very much. That's legalese right there. Thanks you to all the staff. Again, we'll see Samantha this Sunday as part of our Parade and Festival. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to our next meeting on October 16th.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll say Councilmember Durham had that. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night, good night.